Well, we have all the council in the mayor but one, and so we do have a quorum. It is August 26, 2019. We're here at 12:01 at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council's special meeting is now called to order. Our first agenda item on the deliberation agenda is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 1950 approving of submission of the Texas Enterprise Fund application for the city participation in the Texas Enterprise Zone program. And I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman, our city manager, to kind of give us the background on that. I think he's got some speakers. Would you do Chris?
You bet. I would like to say that we're at a milestone, really. We're in a position now where we're able to host an application to submit to the governor's office for economic development incentives. And that program is affiliated with Lake Granbury Medical Center. And we've got their staff here and their team representing this application. We've been working on this. Remember, we've talked about it at executive session through time. And the deadline to submit this is September 3. And so we're kind of right here at the end of the cycle, the planning cycle. I would like to thank them for holding off a quarter because of that other project we were working on that we thought we were going to be able to submit. And so this is the next cycle that's available. And we appreciate you all holding off. But this time, I'll turn it over to the CEO of Lake Granbury Medical Center, David Orcutt, to kind of tell us about what they're planning on doing and whatever he's got to share about the application.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mayor and council, for having us here today. I'm going to pull the CEO thing where I introduce it and then punt it to somebody else.
And hopefully, all the speakers today, just go ahead and tell who you are and your address and everything so that Carly can get it on record for us.
Absolutely. David Orcutt. I live at 2606 Harborside, 048. And so the hospital's been really busy. It's grown a lot over the last 20 years that we've been affiliated with it. And we've probably invested about $80 million, both on the campus and at all the different sites that we have around the community. And our company is excited about continuing to do that. One of the things that makes that easier is any incentives or grants that are available out there. The Texas Enterprise Zone grant is one of those. So that kind of helps us lower the hurdle, the investment hurdle, to get any of the things that we want to get a little sooner. We've had a lot of inpatient growth. ER is rocking, very busy. And we've got new medical director there, new nursing director there, all doing a great job. And then surgeries are at a record high also. And so we are, the grant that we're putting in has several projects in it. We're still balancing how we're going to do each of those and timing and which one comes first and all those kinds of things. But the nice thing about this grant is it gives us some of that flexibility. And we know we'll be able to hit the marks on all of them. And then the beautiful thing about the grant is it helps us by doing those facility upgrades. It gives us the space and capabilities. And but you don't take care of people without other people. So then it helps us with the jobs. And I think that's what the enterprise zone there is to give us the incentive to get more jobs in the community for that. So we have over 600 people involved with either the hospital or lakeside physicians right now, not to mention all the great organizations around us that grow as the hospital grows, the other, the home else and the nursing homes and the other physician offices. So by keeping the hospital growing and incentivizing that, we're growing the community as a whole. So before, I turn it over to the team who wrote the grant with us, I'd like to do a quick introduction of Amy Turner, who didn't know I was going to do it. Amy Turner is our new CFO, who joined us just a month ago and is already doing a great job of telling me no all the time. I mean, of running us financially. And so she and her husband Nick and their two kids moved to town and are excited about raising their kids here. So welcome, Amy. I wanted you all to have a chance to meet her. And next, I'll introduce Eric Weatherford. I've worked with him for about 10 years on different projects here at Lake Granbury. And he is with Hush Blackwell, major healthcare consulting firm nationwide. And he brought his coteria folks, but I think just Eric is going to do the talking. I've never said that word in public before. I don't think I could spell it. Okay, Eric, it's yours.
I assume he meant coterie and not, you know, one of the other words there. Yeah, my name's Eric Weatherford. I am with the firm Hush Blackwell. I'm in Dallas. Don't hold that against me. My address is 1900 North Pearl, Suite 1800 Dallas, 75201. And as David said, I've worked with this hospital for a long time. We've worked on a lot of different projects to help the hospital with getting reimbursed for their uncompensated cost of treating the uninsured and the Medicaid population. This is a little different, but in another way, it's kind of the same. It's a way to develop the hospital, put more resources into it, but get some of that back so that they can continue to serve all the people of the community. So I'm going to give a little bit of background into the Enterprise Zone program. I think a lot of you already know about it. We have met before. But just kind of a refresher. And if you all have any questions, feel free to jump in. This doesn't have to be just a monologue. And I'm happy to field whatever you've got. So the Enterprise Zone program is a Texas program. It's a sales and use tax refund program. And basically, what it does is it allows a business, a community, and the state to partner together, to incentivize growth in that community and with that business. And what you do is you take qualified projects and you identify them, and the city will provide incentives and back that project. And when the state gets applications for these Enterprise Zone designations, then it assesses whether that project is worthy of a tax refund designation. So to be eligible, you've got to have a city like yours to nominate them. And the community also must grant incentives to the business that's applying for the grant or for the designation. We've got to have projects that we're spending money on. It can't just be for any kind of expenditure. It's got to be specific types of things that we are doing. And if it's not located within what they call an enterprise zone, which is typically a disadvantaged area, then the people you're hiring have to be what they refer to as either disadvantaged or they have to be veterans or live in a disadvantaged area. So in this case, the hospital isn't in a disadvantaged area, but its employees, some of its employees are. And so 35% of the new jobs will be coming from one of those groups. Now, those jobs, though, have to, on average, exceed the county's wage, average wages. And that's not of county employees. That's of people in the county. So we can have, in any city, you can, like Lake Granbury, you can have six designations at one time. I don't think, do they have any right now?
No.
Okay, so, okay, so you have none at this time. When the, when the state scores an application, they basically use a point system. They say they're getting this many incentives, they're providing this many jobs, they're spending this amount of money. And at the end of the day, they score it and they say, okay, we'll give designation to this project. And so they get a bunch of applications from about probably 24, 25 different businesses in a given year or in a given quarter, I should say. And then they'll probably give 12 awards. So we're hoping that this application gets one of those 12 or so awards. So I was going to talk just briefly about the programs or the projects that we're going to do. The hospital is going to spend $2 million in upgrading its endoscopy lab and equipment. We've got $1,005 budgeted for expanding the OB unit in the facility, which I understand from talking to David and Amy today is booming right now. And this investment's going to be, you know, a godsend to them. They're going to replace some sewer lines, $900,000. They're going to upgrade their cath lab, their catheterization lab. That's going to cost $800,000. And half a million for medical and surgical bed expansion. That's a total investment of $5.7 million over a five-year period. So it's not an insubstantial amount of money. And we are hoping through this program to get a tax refund somewhere in the amount of $700, $800,000. So we have put together this application, which we've provided to Chris. We've kind of gone back and forth with changes. And he's worked very closely with us. And we appreciate all the time, Chris, you've spent with us on this. And, you know, I guess at this point, I'd ask if anybody has any questions that they want to address with us before we kind of move forward.
Eric, you say you've done several of these? Have you been involved in several of these?
We've been involved in several of these. All of them are still pending right now. But, you know, we, we have worked directly with the state, and they've given us guidance on how this is going to work. Several of our hospitals have had to wait. First time around, they've gotten, they've gotten sort of told, you might want to tweak this to get a better result. We're hopeful that we don't have to do that here. We hope we've learned some lessons. But, but right now, this, we think our application is solid. We also believe that this is the best time to file an application. The state has told us that this is the time they have the fewest applications filed. So...
Well, that was my next question, you know, what the timeline on that is obviously either...
Yeah.
The ones you're doing right now have been tied up some. I mean, we've worked with the governor's office, some, and...
Yeah.
Doing some application like that. And they, you know, it's, it's kind of, well, put it this way, if you don't cross the T, dot the I's, and just one little mistake puts it back quite a ways, you know, and stuff. So it sounds like you guys have done your duty or...
We've been talking very closely with the state, the governor's office on this. And if, for whatever reason, they don't approve it this time, we can refile in December. But there are a lot more people who are applying in December. So for whatever reason, September seems to be the time that we had our best opportunity anyway. We had talked about June. But I think we're better off right now anyway.
Something I just add to that, Mayor. When you were at this meeting and we had the governor's economic development office, but basically after they receive this application, they have staff put it together and vet it and then make recommendations. And then the governor himself gets to look at it. And before it can be approved, it's vetted to a committee, the Economic Development Committee that the governor's appointed. And then the, what we call the big three, all have to agree to execute it, be it the governor, the lieutenant governor, and Speaker of the House. So it's no easy challenge to get this approved. We did look at the scoring, and I'm kind of concerned about 50, was it 53 or 58 out of a possible 150 or something like that. So 160. I wish we could figure out a way to get some more points. But because of our, you know, we're not a poverty-stricken area. Based on the demographics that you looked at, we're about 11% poverty or below poverty level. So that makes it more challenging to get points. But again, the number of applicants that come through at the same time changes how competitive the program is. So we're, you know, what we need to do at this point is have a public hearing. Maybe the audience has some questions, and y'all can ask those questions during the hearing because we need to provide some minutes to the state of the public hearing. It would probably be good for some questions to happen during that public hearing minute. So can you do that?
Well, I'm not going to open up at this time right now. I'm going to let the council, have you got any more questions on this?
Okay.
Like Chris said, at that point, then I'll open up the public hearing. Does the public have any concerns or questions concerning this issue? I'd like to hear from the public. Hearing none, I'll come back to the council. Council, you got any other questions for the staff or these folks sitting out here? And I was hoping maybe that you would say you have a way of making these things move a little faster because I knew exactly what the speed that they...
90 days.
With us working with you, you know. But, you know, hopefully, is there a way we can get a lot of these things that helps get the scoring? Is there like some things that we can work on or that we can...
Really, the, beyond doing the incentive side of things, we can't change the demographic side, as Mr. Kaufman said. So the more incentives we can get, the better. But, yeah, the demographics kind of are what they are, so to speak.
If we had inked the deal for our side of the abatement program that's in our policy, they would have got two more points. So it's, you know, maybe two points is not much in the big scheme of things, but it's two points.
Well, and I don't know what all the things are for scoring points, you know. I mean, short of say, hey, we, just for instance, we live close to a nuclear plant, say.
Right.
And does that give us more points than maybe somebody else? Or, you know, have we got anything that's unique to, you know, getting more points from, that other people wouldn't have in that?
Well, and I don't believe that it's just a strict scoring system, that they just go from highest to lowest. I think it's generally guidance that they use. But I do think that it's obviously important to them. I think they'll look at other things like location and geographic diversity. They're probably not going to grant all of the applications from the Houston area or the San Antonio area. They're going to want them spread out a little bit. So I think that type of thing will come into play as well. So, but yes, the more we can, can improve on the, probably on the incentive side is the best we can do.
Does it help that we're the ninth fastest growing county in the nation, you know?
Ninth fastest growing county in the nation?
Nice.
That's not on the score sheet here, boss.
Yeah. So there, you got it. Okay.
Yeah. I can kind of give you all a general idea.
Lot of items on there, yeah.
Based on our, on our poverty level in the city, it's 9.8, well, we get zero points for that. Because you've got to have a 20 to 22.9 to be able to get the minimum amount of points of four. So, and it goes up to 30%, you get 10 points. Poverty level in the county is 10.9. The threshold, again, is 20% to get any points. Unemployment level for the county is 4.2. And the minimum threshold to get points is 5. Population without a high school diploma is 13.8. In order to get points, you've got to be 25.4%. I mean, we're reflecting a really blessed community, you know. And so it's hard to get points on this application.
Amy, on us for being...
Adversely affect defense-dependent community, in other words, a BRAC community, like maybe where you have a, you know, a military base and they're closing it, that would get you points. Tax abatement, if we had our tax abatement deal done, I mean, our policy says what we'll do. If we just did that, we would have had two more points. So zoning changes of variances, we got a point. Building code exemptions, we're getting a point. Inspection fee exemptions, two points. Streamline permitting, one point. Improved police and fire protection, a point. Community crime prevention programs, we're getting a point. So there's just a lot of list of things here that they like to see. One-stop permitting, problem resolution, one point. Promotion and marketing services, one point. We had a little better job training program for, for folks in that field here. We would get more points, but we do have the minimum for that. So that's kind of where we're at. The wages, we're, we're able to get some points for that because we're willing to do what's asked. They're willing to pay out greater than or equal to 120% of the average weekly wage for the county. We get the full points for that. That's 10 points. So that kind of gives you a feel for how this works. 10 to 199 jobs, you get four points. If it was 500 jobs or above, you get 25 points. So the size of the project matters for overall points. And I think the Economic Development Group in Austin will look at that and weigh that out as a small community. And so basically, we are the host agency for this application. And then from there, you know, they provide all their business plan and everything in the, in the application to go along with it and the facts. They've done a great job drafting it and putting it together.
It looks like, yeah. Very good. Council, any more questions for staff or these folks standing? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the said ordinance and authorize the city manager to submit the application.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilperson Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilwoman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Add is approved. Looking forward to it. Thank you for coming.
Oh, you can leave.
Oh, no, no, I can't.
We recognize that look. That's right, yeah. We do need public comment.
So our next item is the second public hearing on the proposed property tax rate of 0.399385 for the year of 2019-20 for the city of Granbury. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Chris Kaufman. I think we're going to do a slideshow and a little presentation. So, Chris?
You bet. We'll just go through it. It looks like the same, mainly the same folks here that we had in our last public hearing, except for maybe three new people. Welcome, welcome. If we could, let's play that video on our budget. And it kind of explains a Uh-oh, no sound.
I watched it this morning. Overdoubt it for you.
Development of tourism.
Uh-oh, got more than one running.
In the last five years, the Granbury population, in the last five years, services have to keep up with the demand of this growing population. More people means more residential and commercial property. The property tax rate has stayed under 40 cents per $100 valuation for the last seven years. This makes us one of the lowest property tax rates in the area. Plus, the city property tax rate is the lowest tax rate residents pay in Granbury, behind the Granbury ISD tax and the Hood County rate that includes the library and model road tax. It's not just Granbury that is growing. Hood County was recently ranked as the ninth fastest growing county in the United States by the United States Census Bureau. All of this growth means the city council has a lot to consider when adopting a budget for Granbury. The city of Granbury's budget is made up of four funds. We're going to start with the second largest, the general fund. The general fund mainly gets its funding from sales tax at approximately 48%. The second largest revenue source is all the property tax that does not go to debt repayment for large projects. Other sources of revenue come from licenses, permits, court, and park revenue. Altogether, this equals about $18.6 million to take care of many important services for the city, starting with public safety. The general fund covers police, fire, and code enforcement. In Granbury, just like most cities, the majority of the general fund goes to public safety services for our community. But this fund also covers other major community services. The roads, parks, recreation, and public spaces our community enjoys come out of the general fund. Some major highlights from the general fund in this good year 2018-19 were growing commercial and residential development, park upgrades. This included work at the Neely House Boat Dock, Granbury ISD donated property development, and purchasing land for future development, swings at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park that was funded from citizen donations, beach safety initiatives, including additional pincing, beach monitors, and city provided life jackets. We also invested $2.1 million to purchase the ladder truck and pumper truck for the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. The city has also adopted a seven-year comprehensive street rehabilitation plan. In 2018-19, the city funded over $1 million for the first phase of the project. Looking ahead, some of the big projects of the general fund next year are another $1 million for the second phase of the street rehabilitation projects, $200,000 in park improvements, $350,000 in information technology upgrades, an additional $50,000 for police equipment. General fund is also adding a planning technician for community development, another part-time parks laborer, and continuing to hire summer beach monitors for public safety. With the growing population comes a need for additional investment in public safety. This year, the city will be committing $990,000 to hire and equip five new patrol officers and one new criminal investigator and purchase two additional police vehicles. The city will also implement a comprehensive salary adjustment to help the department attract and retain good candidates. In the upcoming years, the city is also planning to construct a standalone police station to better serve the community. Now, let's talk about the largest fund, the utility fund. The utility fund provides for our community's everyday needs such as electricity, water, and sewer services. As the population grows, so does our service demand for both water and electric services. The city's utility fund is run more like a business. As the revenue the city takes in from water, sewer, and electric customers covers... The property tax rate has stayed under 40 cents per $100 valuation for the last seven years. This makes us one of the lowest property tax rates in the area. Plus, the city property tax rate is the lowest tax rate residents pay in Granbury, behind the Granbury ISD tax and the Hood County rate that includes the library and lateral road tax. It's not just Granbury that is growing. Hood County was recently ranked as the ninth fastest growing county in the United States by the United States Census Bureau. All of this growth means the city council has a lot to consider when adopting a budget for Granbury. The city of Granbury's budget is made up of four funds. We're going to start with the second largest, the general fund. The general fund mainly gets its funding from sales tax at approximately 48%. The second largest revenue source is all the property tax that does not go to debt repayment for large projects. Other sources of revenue come from licensees, permits, court, and park revenue. Altogether, this equals about $18.6 million to take care of many important services for the city, starting with public safety. The general fund covers police, fire, and code enforcement. In Granbury, just like most cities, the majority of the general fund goes to public safety services for our community. But this fund also covers other major community services. The roads, parks, recreation, and public spaces, our community enjoys, come out of the general fund. Some major highlights from the general fund in fiscal year 2018-19 were growing commercial and residential development, park upgrades. This included work at the Neely House Boat Dock, Granbury ISD donated property development, and purchasing land for future development, swings at the Jim Burks Firefighters Memorial Park that was funded from citizen donations, beach safety initiatives including additional fencing, beach monitors, and city-provided life jackets. We also invested $2.1 million to purchase the ladder truck and pumper truck for the Granbury Volunteer Fire Department. The city has also adopted a seven-year comprehensive street rehabilitation plan. In 2018-19, the city funded over $1 million for the first phase of the project. Looking ahead, some of the big projects of the general fund next year are another $1 million for the second phase of the street rehabilitation projects, $200,000 in park improvements, $350,000 in information technology upgrades, and additional $50,000 for police equipment. General fund is also adding a planning technician for community development, another part-time parks laborer, and continuing to hire summer beach monitors for public safety. With the growing population comes a need for additional investment in public safety. This year, the city will be committing $990,000 to hire and equip five new patrol officers and one new criminal investigator, and purchase two additional police vehicles. The city will also implement a comprehensive salary adjustment to help the department attract and retain good candidates. In the upcoming years, the city is also planning to construct a standalone police station to better serve the community. Now let's talk about the largest fund, the utility fund. The utility fund provides for our community's everyday needs such as electricity, water, and sewer services. As the population grows, so does our service demand for both water and electric services. The city's utility fund is run more like a business as the revenue the city takes in from water, sewer, and electric customers covers the operating expenses for those services. Some major utility fund projects in 2018, 2019, finishing the $17 million water distribution system expansion project and building an elevated water tank, developing and implementing an updated impact fee and capital improvement plan, starting a five-year phase out on all city electric meters to the A my smart meters, an annual tree trimming initiative as preventative maintenance on our electric lines, and preventative maintenance on manholes. Additionally, there are several large ongoing projects for utility fund in 2019, 2020. The city is upgrading the current wastewater plant to newer treatment technology and beginning construction on the East Wastewater Treatment Plan, utilizing $15 million in bonds for additional water and sewer infrastructure. We will also be completing Phase Two of the water treatment plant, which will grow its capacity from 2.5 million gallons of water per day to 5 million gallons of water per day. Funding for these projects would not have been possible without the city's ability to access low-interest financing through the Texas Water Development Board. In order to staff the additional facilities and serve the new development, the utility fund will add seven new positions, one city engineer, one additional line for electric, one water quality technician, two wastewater true implant operators, and two utility operators. The final two funds are the airport fund and the tourism fund. The airport fund is used to account for revenues and expenses related to the operation and maintenance of the Granbury Regional Airport. Capital improvements from the airport are funded primarily through grants. For example, the airport runway project is funded through a $15.7 million grant from Techstock. Phases one and two of the airport's runway project are complete. Phase three is currently underway. When the project is completed in 2022, the airport runway will be 5200 feet long and 75 feet wide. Our budget relies heavily on sales tax, so it's important to our economy that people visit and spend money in Granbury. The city's tourism fund is for the city's Convention and Investors Bureau, or CBB. The CBB has two major components, Visit Granbury and Lake Granbury Conference Center. Two other cultural centers, the Lincoln Center and the Opera House, are also accounted for in the tourism fund. The money for the tourism fund comes from the Lake Granbury Conference Center revenues as well as revenues from the hotel occupancy tax, or HOT tax. The CBB uses that HOT tax revenue and invests it back into activities that will promote more growth. This includes promoting Granbury events and festivals, marketing Granbury as a tourism destination, running the visitor's center in downtown Granbury, highlighting Lake Granbury activities, and much more. Now that you know a little more about the city's proposed budget, let us know what you think or what questions you may have. Visit the city website to view the proposed budget document in full detail, find out how you can be part of the process, and utilize the Open Gov tool to learn even more about
So with, with the development of that, I need to give a little history of the background, how, how the budget was actually put together. Back in the winter months, we had a strategic planning session where the council spent the entire day looking at the needs of the community and updating the previous strategic plan to be the one that is identified now with priorities. It listed those six areas at the very first of the, the video. And also in our strategic plan, we looked at the economic development side of that and a big component of that is a plan to, to enhance and try to attract more medical and professional-related jobs here related to the medical community. So we're excited about the project that the hospitals put together and obviously we've been working with them on that. But anyway, we, we did have a budget workshop in June and at that time, we were talking about needing additional tax revenue and the council communicated that it was clear that we needed to maintain the existing tax rate that we have. And so we went back and reprioritized and, and cut the staff funding for a lot of different areas and increased some revenue. One of the, one of the revenue streams, instead of having a 3% increase on water and sewer, it'll be a 4% increase. The electric utility remains the same. And the, some other cuts through the program, we're able to come up with the five new officers and the detective instead of six. So there was a compromise took place with the police staffing to try to get us into a balanced budget situation. So if we were to increase the budget some more, we could fund that, that sixth position. But at this time, everybody seems to be satisfied with the budget that we proposed and put together for you. And so the tax rate that we need to fund this budget is the same tax rate that we had last year. And Ava's got a bunch of statistics. If you need any of those, we can get her to come up and talk. But other than that, I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chris. At this time, it is a public hearing. I'm going to turn it over to the public for a public comment and we do have a couple of folks that have signed up to speak, first one being Richard Haves.
Richard Haves, 428 Riverbank Lane here in Granbury. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city manager. I took the time to read through the city budget and was quite impressed with what I saw. The city is run responsibly and frugally and has been a lot of attention paid to good stewardship of the public funds. I noticed, for example, that older debt was refinanced when the interest rates were down to save the taxpayers' money. I also noticed that the loans were, were structured with various payment schedules to keep the total payments for all the loans even, to prevent any shock to the city budget. So there's been some good work there to watch out for the taxpayers. We have a lot of challenges due to growth in this city, which is both a blessing and a curse, and I think this budget balances those needs rather well. I'd like to thank the city council, mayor, city manager, and your staff for all the hard work you've done putting this together and thank you for, for watching out for the taxpayers' interests. I appreciate it.
Our next speaker is Jack Martin.
One of our newest citizens of my dad.
Rub it in.
We love you.
Yeah, I was going to mention that.
Too soon.
I'm Jack Martin. My address is 2151 Lapan Highway, Granbury, Texas, a city resident. Oh, yeah, I said his title. I'm, I'm a retired engineer, senior consultant to Conger Nelsie and Surtrek, first vice president of Preserve Granbury, need to talk, president emeritus of HRT, vice president of Backpacker Jack, and Papa to two beautiful grandchildren. So I have a lot of experience with budgets and whatnot. I read Chris's summary. I didn't read the Mueller report either, but I read the summary. And, yeah, and then I really liked this. This is good. For 70 years, I have lived just outside the city and I've enjoyed the city amenities, the parks, driving on the city streets, hiking bike trails, really liked those, and more recently, the playgrounds. And like I say, I've used those for free, so I guess it's time I started paying. So I'm okay with that. And then if I'm going to pay for something, I want to make sure it's worth it. So as the gentleman said, looking at the summary, I trust your summary is accurate, yeah, it looks like you did allocate the funds for those pillars, the vision. So I appreciate you taking care of the paltry dollars that I give you now, but thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, one of the objectives I've always had as a manager is to ensure that whatever the taxpayers pay, they see a good return on their investment. And I really believe that this budget and this tax rate illustrates that, so.
Were we going to put something in place to kill some hogs or something like that too out there?
Yeah.
Take care of that.
Is there something in the budget for killing hogs?
We, it was kind of late, kind of late.
I think, I think we've got some offline interest to take care of.
We have a lot of volunteers for that.
Just to warn you, I've had four snares.
They're pretty, pretty big hogs then, aren't they? Yeah.
I still lack our chances.
Might get some citizen participation there. At this time, is there anybody else in the public that wishes to comment on the said budget? Said tax rate, I'm sorry. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any more comments on the said tax rate? At this time, I will, will announce that before we end this, this hearing, that the time and the place for the next meeting or to set the tax rate will be September 3rd, 2019, at 6:00 PM here at the regular council meeting. So at that time, we'll be setting that tax rate. So hearing none, I'll close that comments. Counsel, do you have any more discussion or anything else? Hearing none, I'll adjourn the city council special meeting.